Hi, this is Prius. Yeah, this will be another session review. I'm getting better and better, at least it feels like that. Yeah. We will look into some hands I played today. Let's start off with this one. I really hope that we got a sim for that. Call. Queen, king nine. King, queen nine, king, queen. King, queen eight, we got. Yeah, that's very specific, we need a board. Well, we got both flushes straight. I really hope it. No, we could take this one instead. Let's do it. So our board will be check ten eight instead. Preferred bad size on a monochrome board seems to be half pot. I guess we already knew that, but just... For the people who didn't knew yet. Yeah, let's see what we are supposed to do. I guess the check is mandatory. But let's find out what sort of hands are betting here. So we bet 30% of hands. And yeah, straight flushes unsurprisingly will be betting. Okay, what else? But straight flush also checking. Okay, let's go a bit down, okay. Nut flushes are also betting a lot, but still doing a decent amount of sloping. Want to see hands which are not that nutted. So all nut flushes here, still nut flushes. Okay, let's scroll down a bit. Still nut flushes, second nut flushes. But seems like second nut flushes already check more than they bet. Okay, now we are talking. Let's look into the hands. Okay, these hands are basically doing these steps at almost no frequency, okay. Straight with nut flush blocker bets. Two pair with nut flush blocker bets. Sets bet. Some of the time. What is this? Two pair blocking the straight and blocking the flush. Straight blocking the flush, blocking straights. Okay, that's another straight. Check ten, eight, nine, three pair with a gut shot or an open end nut bet, but not often. Seems like the preferred line most likely is to check with this hand. Straight blocker and flush blocker bet. This is also like, yeah, 11%, not sure if we can trust this sim. Let's see some more mediocre hands. Yeah, rep pair, flush blocker, two pair. But these are all very low frequency ones. Six, seven, eight, check. Nine, nine, so if you block the straight and the nut flush, it's time to bet unsurprisingly. What is this? Top pair, gut shot and again nut flush blocker. Yeah, so I guess the betting range is highly built around having the correct blockers and occasionally betting some weaker stuff like top and bottom pair, but yeah. Not that often. Open ender and a pair and flush blocker. Bottom two with four being blocked. Ace, ace, queen, queen blocking the nut flush. Okay. What is the worst stuff we are betting? There are some complete air balls in here. Yeah, but not many. So this is like nothing at all, sometimes we want to bet. So we have some complete air hands, but not many. Queen five, five, four. Yeah, okay, so what did you learn? Not that much, so what do we do with a straight? Nine queen. Yeah. Nine queen without spades. Yeah, if you got a straight, we should check majority of the time. We only bet if we got strong backup and sometimes blockers too, as you can see. And even then, checking seems to be the preferred line, these percentages are not very high. Yeah, so we could make our strategy a bit easier and say that we are just checking whole range here with a straight. I guess that makes sense. I had a straight and a pair in the original hand. Okay, let's... So we check mainly and what do we do now if facing a bet? I guess this has to be a call. We have got to have some minimum defense frequency and yeah, we cannot fold straights right away against one small bet. Looks like we fold some right away, but majority is getting called and almost non-getting raised. And these might be, because the sim didn't run long enough, and this might be calls in reality. I mean, the call has more EV, so probably call is the way to go. Here supposedly raise has maybe more EV, but yeah, not sure if we can trust that one. So yeah, we check call is the way to go. I hope we can see turns, but we can't. Would be interesting how we should proceed from there if we face more bets. So yeah, in general, these monocron boards are played relatively passively. The betting is built heavily around having good hands, small air porsche and yeah, betting with blockers. And yeah, this is, these locked on boards get checked very often. Let's check out what our mediocre flashes do. That's also an interesting one. I guess checking very often. So let's give us a flush. Yeah. Flushes, even flushes check more often when we bet and yeah. If we open raise, we already have a lot more knowledge of flushes. So yeah, this is played very passively in general. Okay, what about the imposition player? I guess he will be more aggressive. Is it already loaded? Seems so, so I was wrong. The imposition player is not more aggressive, but this is probably due to the fact that he has a very wide range. He's defending the big blunt 70% or something. And he will have a lot less strong hands on this board than the small blind. So it makes sense that he is also checking a lot and not betting much. So let's see what he's doing with flushes in general. Yeah, it's basically played the same as all opposition. We also check a lot and don't bet that much. Okay, moving on to the next hand. So this, then check, check on the flop. I guess, what was my question? I guess this definitely is not an open under the gun. Is it? Not, yeah, let's, let's find this out first. Eight, eight, jack, queen suited, pretty sure, but we should not be in there. Yes, even double suited, this is not strong enough. I guess it's strong enough if at 100 PB. But sometimes in the heat of the moment when you're playing, you like some hands and you get involved anyways. Although you, in theory, know the correct answer and it's even a fold for 100 PB with the position we are in. Okay. Okay. So we cannot look into this hand with the solver, because our hand is not an open. Let's see if our hand, I guess it's probably also not an open from MP. Yeah. Eight, eight, jack, queen. Yep, still a fold. It might become an open from cut off. It should, I see. Eight, eight, jack, queen. But only if double suited, so my raise was very loose. Okay, let's now raise it up. He calls. Nine, seven, four. Nine, seven, three. Guess it's fine. Checked. Let's see if we should better check the flop. Eight, eight, jack, queen. Hearts is a suit here and we check. So this was done correctly. And can we see a turn? No, we cannot see a turn. Can we see a turn with 100 PB? Let's check that out. All right, four. Because some turns are available if it's going check, check. So let's hope for the best. Seven, four, nine. Nine, seven, four. Okay, this one and oh, check is good, check is good, we can see a turn. Unfortunately, not the one we are looking for. So this is a bit annoying, because these cards are all... So no, the board pairs, so yeah, let me got to take this seven. And I guess it's check, check again. But let's see. Nice. You already sent me a message on Twitter, I didn't look into that yet. I think we had a spot already, but unfortunately you were not here yet. Queen, jack, eight, eight is hearts out, is a suit. So looks like we should check again. And I think we will have river sims also if we check. And yeah, okay, we don't know what the river was. Let's make it a blank three. There was some water blank, so it's getting checked. And it's on us. I think it was exactly the way I programmed it. We check, we were checking through again and I think I was betting the river and he folded something like that. Yeah, you should bet 50% and some... Also mixed in some pot size bets, but it looks like the 50% bet is more dominant. And yeah, it also makes sense. I mean, you kept your range by checking back twice and now you are representing a medium hand. And the medium hand doesn't necessarily wants to bet big, so yeah, makes sense. Okay, so I need to look it up. Had no time yet, but will do after this session. Ah, that was very stupid, I think. Probably should have checked back and yeah, now getting raised felt very stupid. Immediately after I made this bet, I was like, ah, that's not good. And yeah, got punished. The hardest for it. Okay, we are at 100 PB, that's correct. By the way, do you think that's a bet or not? I think probably not. That's... Okay, I was not the aggressor, although given the fact that he is the aggressor, maybe it's not that bad, because he is not supposed to hit it that often, but yeah, still checking back most likely is the way to go. Eight, six, seven. Eight, six, seven. Eight. Seven, six, where it is, but we need a flush or two. You have poker trainer as well, because I think they added some additional sims. So let's see, he checks and bad size is correct, choose the GTO one. But let's look into this. Eight, seven, queen, queen. Eight, seven, queen, queen. We got diamonds. Eight, seven, queen, queen with diamonds is a 100% check. But we are betting some, okay, we should bet the two pair and the flush draw hands. Yeah, what to do now? Yeah, I should have checked. Unfortunately, I did not. And but yeah, it's still interesting. Let's assume that we have one of the hands of auto backdoor flush draw. And once we face, what is it, a full pot size raise? I think so. I probably, I think it's probably a fold. Yeah. Without the flush draw, we now got a fold and yeah. That was unfortunate, but not as big of a mistake when I afford. Okay, good vision front of you. So you invested quite a bit of money having both solvers. Not, well, we said not solvers, but yeah, third party tools which are both quite expensive. Vision is 100 bucks a month, right? And pillow trainer soon will be 150 bucks. That's too much in my eyes, but yeah, okay, whatever. Okay, let's, no more. Unfortunately, we cannot continue if we check, we don't have any more sims. Although one more thing we could do here is check and see what sort of hands we are supposed to bet. Money is not a problem, yeah. Money is never, should never be a problem. Must be nice. We are betting quite a lot here. More than I thought. I mean, this is a straight board with a flush draw two and we bet almost half our hands. Didn't expect that. Let's see the more marginal ones we are betting. Ah, that's so annoying, but we always got these 44%. I think the solver always chooses the one with the best EV, right? So all these sims were not run long enough and we cannot trust most of these results. Ace, ten for deuce. So we are bluffing the fans that are just blocking a straight very marginal. For example, ace, queen, ten, five. Yeah, that's another example that goes in this category. Ace, ten for deuce, yeah, I think we had these already. Let's look into some with more higher frequency. Ace, jack, three deuce, what is this? Complete air ball. 100% ace, ten, five deuce, yeah, so we block the five and the ten and that's enough for the solver to bluff. And we also don't have a heart, but we still want to bluff. Ace, king, ten, five, okay, again, we block the low straight and the highest straight. Ace, ten, yeah, a lot of ace tens in there. Now it's a four instead of a five and we again block the straights in both directions. Ace, check, four deuce, yeah, we block basically nothing. We just have a four blocker and the jack is not that helpful. I mean, if you have a ten, you often have a jack too, but yeah, it's very marginal. Yeah, but yeah, but I think if you step these boards a lot, which the solver seems to do, it makes sense, because usually when people check these boards, they fold. Sometimes they got the occasional slow play, but yeah, in my eyes, it seems that it's quite plus EV to make a small half pot bet with a lot of your range. Yeah, so we, we betting like a lot of air balls would have just a little bit of blockers. Okay, that's what we are trying to find out. Yeah, I mean, for me, it would also be not a problem to have both, but I'm, I'm just a bit too cheap. I just, I'm always like, ah, I don't want to spend this extra 100 bucks, but I guess I had, I got to get vision two soon. But because, yeah, it's, it's just too helpful to be able to look in some GTO spots. This one was also quite annoying. I mean, on the flop, I was betting full pot, he called. And on the turn, I sort of improved, but yeah, our stacks are very iffy. I was very unsure what I should have, what I should do here. By the way, did vision also add more sims, so that we maybe have deep stacked or more boards? Or do we have river now? Because as I had a subscription for it, we had no rivers. This was very annoying and you were supposed to do the river sims on your own. I mean, get the fuck out of here. Why do you doubt you have river sims? And we also have no pre-flop. This should be easy to add, because we already have the pre-flop run. Because if you want to look into hands that are not into your range, we just say, yeah, you are not supposed to have this hand, so should be easy to add pre-flop too. And this would also be then a better product to get into, what is it called? Yeah, to fight other products that are basically your opponents in the field of poker software like the pillow trainer. Then vision would be a lot more useful if they had pre-flop too. I really don't now, by the way, what I should do in this hand. Any recommendations? I mean, I bet pot on the flop. Trying to take it down and the turn improves us a lot. But yeah, he called the pot size bet on the flop, so I guess he's usually quite strong. So what's your action here? The dog is freaking out. Have to go to the door very quickly, but in the meantime, let me know what you would do on the turn. So money is no, no problem. What are you doing on the turn? Yeah. Very, I wonder very much if I should have. This is basically like yeah, similar at least to the situation we had yesterday, where we were also deep and yeah, had some sort of draw, but we also expect our opponent to be very strong. Do you have, how deep are we here? Do you have deep stacked as well? I mean, we are the aggressor. He raised from middle position, we re-raise from the small blind, which might already be non-GTO. And yeah, we were betting full pot on the flop, that's probably also not GTO. And yeah, on the turn, we didn't knew what to do and so we randomly pushed the three quarters pot button, hoping that he's not folding. And yeah, he didn't fold it, but I miraculously won the pot. Maybe I should not tell you results yet. I think he made a very loose flop here. He had ace, no, not ace, king, queen, jack, ten or something. So backdoor straight draw and top pair. And yeah, on the turn, he had picked up some more stuff and therefore called again and on the river it blanked and he checked behind and I won. Yes, I three bet, not sure, that's a three bet. Yeah, could be. Let's check that out. Probably not, to be honest. Double suited, most likely, but singles suited. Raise, fold. Maybe you have to make my hand double suited in order to allow vision to have it. Ace, ten, jack, jack. I mean, it's, if it's wrong, it's not a huge mistake, but yeah, probably not a three bet. Double suited, it's a three bet. Oh, singles suited, three bet as well, so. It wasn't spewy this time, or even with three from one suit, you should three bet. Although this is not a sim we can trust. Yeah, what does the vision say to, yeah? I really, I'm really unsure what to do. It's also quite unlikely, but he has something. I mean, he could have a set and he could slow play it, given how dry the board is. And if I'm up against a set, I'm not doing well, but if he is calling top pair or shit sometimes. If he's calling top pair, he often also made a hand now, because nine. If he has a ten, it's connected to nine and the nine is sort of dangerous. We don't, again, we are the aggressor. We re-raise from the small blind, he was open raising from the cutoff. And yeah, we were potting the flop and now we are lost on the turn. I mean, for 100 BB, that's easy. You can just stick it in, but we still got 130 or 50 BB left in this one, so it's not that easy. But it's still interesting what the 100 BB solution is. But keep in mind, this is a lot deeper. I guess checking the flop is probably the way to go. But yeah, what should I say? I like to push buttons and that are the situations I get myself into. And yeah, luckily, he had, he was calling flop with just top pair and yeah, had picked up some additional equity on the turn, called again and yeah, river bricked. He was, had no balls and check back. And not sure what I would have done. It's also interesting if he should call his hand on the flop. Let's, let me try to bring up the hand. But unfortunately, I have no hold the manager open yet, so. Will load up. Take some time, we could look at this. What is this? Nine, six, looks like I don't like this spot. I don't like this one too. So, but let's find this hand first. We need, this is zoom, that's correct, and that's the hand. So here we go. He opens, we raise, he calls, we pot the flop, he calls. Turn gives us additional equity, so we were getting more money in and the river is not great. We check, he checks. Okay, we see the whole cards now, right? Now, so show results. I mean, if he calls flop, he has to call turn, but not sure if he should call flop. Do you think he should call flop? I mean, that's probably also solvable with this beautiful tool. So yeah, bets, raise, fold, re-raise, fold, call. Ten, five, something, ten, five, three. What was it? Ten, five, deuce. Ten, five, deuce. No suits. Download, see what ace, ten, jack should do. Ace, ten, jack should bet full pot most of the time. Although, although yeah, we could ignore this as these are very small percentages, so we should bet the full pot if 100 BB deep. Keep in mind, this is 200 BB deep and at least or almost 200 BB deep, so this makes it a lot more tricky. What, by the way, what happens? If he goes all in, I guess we fold even after the pot bet. Oh, fuck, I made a mistake. Oh, but that's not a mistake. King, ten, jack, queen is doing what? It's calling. So he also played it correct. I mean, the top pair should be a fold. Efi dozen has a great backdoor rap draw as well, so yeah, that's probably the reason why, why it wants to call. Ace, jack, jack, ten. Ace, jack, jack, ten is bad calling. Yeah, no problem. So back to the hand. Yeah, so we could also compare vision results to poker. What is it called? Poker trainer. I think sometimes we got different results and also different bet sizes. I remember that this was the case in the past, but yeah, maybe I mixed something up, but yeah, could be the case. Yeah, I think we probably cannot solve this turn one as, yeah, we are very deep and yeah, this is not a good sport to be in, but I guess betting the flops smaller is definitely reasonable and then checking turn to check call and yeah, see what the river brings. So yeah, I think I played this a bit too aggressive and yeah, once I bet that much, I think I also have committed myself and would have to call it off and yeah, that's not a hand we probably want to play with such a huge pot with. Yeah, so turn is probably betting pot. Yeah. Could have bet pot too. I mean, this is basically the same. I just give him a better price if he's drawing. So yeah, let's move on to the next one. That's also something that might be worth looking into in vision. Yeah, I bet the flop, he called on the turn. I bet he raises full pot as it seems. Is this full pot? No, it's not full pot, but it's three quarters pot or something. So thirty-two, I have to call in order to win seventy-five. No, not seventy-five, 107. This is, yeah, I hate these spots, but also got a gut shot. I'm wrong, I don't have a gut shot. Yeah, I guess calling is a play and yeah, and hoping to suck out on the river. Guess vision will also not help us for the river. Is this, is this a call? I guess it is a call. It might be a call on the river too. If it breaks. Because he can have all sorts of other draws and not four or five for the made straight already. Although this guy looks quite nitty, so not sure if he's semi bluffing. Sure. Let's see if, I think we cannot, we we cannot do much here with pillow trainer. Can you look into this in vision? I will also look into this in poker tools and queen, nine, queen, spades, nine, clubs, six, spades, eight, diamonds. Board is three hearts, nine spades, six clubs, two spades. Let's not come up with a range for him. He is not defending that much against cutoff. So let's do it this way. Let's give him, what is the hand he might be check raising? Three, three with spades, nine, nine with and without spades. Six, six, let's say with spades. Deuce, deuce, although deuce, deuce, he cannot, doesn't cannot come to the turn, I guess. And the reps also sometimes raise a flop already. Seven, eight, nine with spades, but this hand is also great to call. Yeah, I guess he just has four, five. I guess he has four, five. He just has four, five. I mean, if my numbers are correct, could most likely already fold on the turn. Although he might have some nine, six with spades, I already got nine, six with spades, nine, three with spades. Although he doesn't have that many nine threes in his range probably, as he's not defending white. He could have, what bluffs can he have? Seven, eight and spades. Seven, eight, four, four, seven, eight. Five, five. Nine. Nine, five, five. Nine, five, five, nine, four, four. Even when, down, doesn't get much better. Seven, eight with spades. Five. Five, seven, eight. Is this raising the flop not the? Not necessarily. Five, seven, eight with spades. Okay, if he gets in some other, come, what's he might come, if he's doing this with all sets. Because he just doesn't put us on four, five. Okay, that's making our equity even worse. This sucks, so that's actually close if we can even call the turn. But I guess most likely handy has is he can has some of the other stuff too, but four-five is what he has most of the time. What if we are up against four-five? Of course, some sets raise a flop and stuff. Four-five. Okay. He always assume that the red spots like these are easy calls, but if you cannot put your opponent on many plus. This seem to be not the case. Is anyone ever folding the turn? With this hand, I mean, our opponent looks a bit nitty. And it's even hard to put him on any sort of bluff. Guess he has it most of the time. But I, I think I got, I have to bet, or my hand is just way too good and I don't expect him to have four or five often because he's very tight pre-flop. According to my data, he is folding seventy-seven percent of the time. So he's defending hands that are not including four-five that often. Well, to my, this is a valid bet, but turn race is, we don't like it. Don't like it at all. Yeah, not sure. And yeah, if he is raising stuff like six-six with spades, we are, it is even worse when four-five. Like seven-eight with spades, for example, might be one of his bluffs or nine, five-five, nine, four-four. Where he called the flop with and now got blockers, but yeah, often dozen has, we sent in the first place and it's also the question if he's bluffing with it. Yeah, don't see that many bluffs, he might have bluffs like five-five, six-seven. So that's a gut shot. End pair, oh, that's better, bluffs would are actually possible. So five-five, six-seven, four-four. Four-four, six-seven. Something like that. Hmm, five-five, seven-eight. Five-five, nine ace. Four-four, nine ace. Nine-nine. Let's add three-three with spades too. Okay, how are we doing against the range? So not good. Oh, I forgot the straight again. Straight is four-five. But I guess it's not changing that much, yeah, or I didn't forget it. I didn't forget it, uh. Yeah, it's single raise pot, single raise pot. I bet flop, he calls, I bet, uh, he checks turn, I bet he raises. And I'm very sad. Okay, you can have double pairs like four-four, five-five with another pair. But the other pair, if it's a gut shot, so I guess all of these combos are probably still in his range. Other than ace-ace and stuff. Let's, wait. Four-four, RR, five-five, RR. And let's also move the top. How much three bet does he have? Not that much as it seems, so let's put him at like six percent. And yeah, when he would have thirty percent, so if he calls with four-four, five-five on the flop, where he has another pair in hand. I guess most of it will call. Four-four, seven. This has a gut shot right here, it has, uh, five-five, seven-seven, gut shot. Five-five, eh, the gut shot, uh. Five-five, ten-ten, over there, yeah, so. Seems like most of them might stay in the against the flop bet. Yeah, but even, even now, even if we try very hard to find bluffs. Yeah. It's very hard to come up with a range that we are doing well against. So this is already the range with a lot of bluffs included, so yeah, no clue. But yeah, I guess the solver would probably, um, call. Turn and it would be interesting if he, if solver folds blank rivers. I mean, I think it was a jack or something on the river, so relative blank and I folded for like not much left. Oh, the same guy again. Ah, tilt. Again, I was, flop was check-check, turn, I for some reason decided that I probably got the best hand and need some protection and then he was coming after me again. Let's see if we can. Yeah, we cannot get into this. But we could probably get into this with vision. If we had it, but yeah, let's, let's do some PropoGat Tools for this. Uh, he's very tight, he is nineteen percent raising only. He didn't re-race us, so three percent, until nineteen percent and we got ace-hats, ace-spade, eight-spade, three diamond. This is close, I don't know if folding or getting it in is correct. This is very, very close and tough. Because now he can have a lot more semi-bluffs for sure. Yeah, single raise pot was right, I already did say that, I think. So, let's construct a range for him, um. Can have sets, let's add all sets, uh, can he have two pair, I mean. Let's just add for now all two pairs. Let's add. Any suit. Um. Which won't make sense. Asai flush draw. Add. Although, the Asai flush draw is a although, most of the time has a pair or a gut shot too, so that's probably fine. So let's add all these insane straight draws. Okay, so this will be a lot of work, um. Let's look into this, um, Jack ten, yes, he can do this with Jack five, okay. Uh, Jack four, okay, um, ten-five. Could be doing this with ten-five. Ten-five seems a bit loose, so let's give ten-five clubs or diamonds as well. Uh, ten-four also, let's say, needs clubs or diamonds. And four-five also needs diamonds or clubs. Okay. Uh, yeah, these also need something in addition to be honest, um. So it needs a jack, a ten, a four, a five, a queen or a king. So these are gut shots or pairs. And let's put this on there here too, um, what is this, um, that's how many odds is this, twelve? Yeah, that is many, 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 many odds, but not sure if people do this if we don't have a flush draw too. I mean. If I bet that much, it's yeah, let's, let's also add eiser diamonds or clubs. Um, yeah, it's the same diamonds. Eight-seven. Uh, three, six, is he even having this in his range? Not sure, but clubs, um, this is, this probably not in his range, so, but yeah, that's, uh, clubs isn't, I needed two or diamonds. Um, that's a huge draw too, so also clubs. Although, this is also the nuts, right, so let's uh, or not, yeah, but more nutty, let's say, uh, this, let's just keep it in without a flush draw, um. This one needs diamonds. Nine-eight-seven or clubs. Uh, this needs diamonds or clubs. Well, this takes very long, um. This needs a pair. Uh, Jack, Gotten. Let's say, or four-five, yeah, let's find, uh, or or diamonds or clubs. Um, you want to see this one? Um, okay, that's also needing pair. Let's only go with Jack and ten and, uh, seven, six, seven-six-three, clubs, seven, seven-six-three diamonds, but that's so much work. Diamonds. Or clubs. Uh, this needs diamonds or clubs. Ace, king, three-deuce, needs clubs. Wow, this is so much longer, I think. Uh, this needs Jack, White ten. Jack, White ten. Um, King, queen, nine, has I, I'm not, let's just keep it this way, it's just too much work, uh. Let's also keep this, this one like it is, uh, nine-eight-seven. I think we already had this before, right? Yeah, okay, this is already done. So, let's remove this one, this one is also done, uh, eight-six-seven probably also done. Is it? Yep, and this one also, all of these are already done, um. Okay, this needs diamonds. Or clubs. I think this is not even his range, so probably not worth it, this is also not in his range, right? Sixteen thousand, fuck, it's just, that's just annoying, this is so annoying. Where are, where are we? Oh, this was like back in the day, you had to go through all this, now you have a good solver, I think this is not in his range, let's just remove it, um, this can be in his range. So it's diamonds, did he need diamonds for this? Yeah, I suppose, uh, king, queen, seven-six, clubs. Um, diamonds or clubs. Eh, three-deuce, uh, with clubs. Ace, three-deuce can also have a jack with it and then it's probably also fine for him to stick it in, um. This needs diamonds, ace, king, queen or clubs, um, this is a huge draw, needs diamonds. Hmm, king, queen, six-three, or clubs. Nine-eight-seven, I think we already had most of these uh, done, so. Yeah, these are all just doubles, uh, what is this? Gut shot and another gut shot, right? Probably not in his range, so let's remove this one, this might be in his range, um, diamonds. Uh, king-nine, six-seven, king-nine, six-seven, clubs. Uh, king, queen, this, uh, diamonds, king, queen. Six, clubs. Oh, this is also in his range, but we had this, had, now I don't think so, clubs. King, queen, eight-seven diamond, king, queen, eight-seven diamond. King, ace, queen, nine, uh, this is just a double gotcha, although that's many gotcha, uh. King is helping. Okay, we're in open end, uh, eight is making this, okay, that's a lot, uh, so diamonds needed. Ace, queen, nine-three, ace, queen, nine-three, clubs needed. Nine-eight, that's not in his range, let's remove it. Um, that's the same one as before, we need clubs. Or almost the same one, ace, queen, nine, use, we need diamonds. I hope I'm not boring you too much, this can take some more time, um. But not giving up now after going all through this, almost finished, uh, ace, king. Clubs. Uh, that's not in his range, that's also not in his range. This neither, um, this also not in his range, not in his range. Not in his range, uh, could be in his range, okay, let's say this, this is also not in his range. Just to make it a bit more easy and probably he is not defending this, so. Hmm, this could be in his range, what is it? Uh, nine-seven, is he got, uh, nine-seven, uh, queen, nine- Uh, nine, seven, is he got, uh, nine, seven, uh, queen, nine is in open end, six, seven is in open end, okay, diamonds. Or clubs, uh, queen, nine. Seven, six, this is taking so fucking long, uh, that's not in his range. Uh, oh, okay, diamonds, ace, queen, six, three, with clubs. Now let's not in his range, uh, that is in his range, so clubs. And diamonds. We should be finished soon, uh, ace, king, let's just double gotcha, with diamonds. And we need the other flush draw too. Oh boy, where did it, where did I add it? Oh, fuck. Once there is a mistake in this thing, it will be almost impossible to find it. Oh no, I hope I didn't mess it up, uh. Where is this thing which I added in? Where is it? Where is it? Fucking hell. Steuerung Z. No, I can't go back, so I have to find the mistake. Where the fuck is the mistake? It should be somewhere at the end, right? Can't find it, can't find it. So this is definitely, this is deleted, this is deleted too. Uh, this is must be deleted, this, this. Man, I hope this can be fixed. Ace, queen, eight, six, didn't we have this already? We need this with clubs. Here's one mistake. Clubs. Diamonds. Clubs. Um, diamonds. Clubs. Okay, let's move this. And I think it's telling us that the mistake is, uh. Player, two, nine, uh, fuck, oh, this, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I, is it this one? No. This. Somewhere. Somewhere is, uh, how is it called in English? Not sure how it is called, but is it this one? One, eine Klammer geht auf. Eine Klammer geht zu, das muss doch richtig sein, oder? Die Klammer muss hin, weitere Klammer hin? Nein. What do you think, chat? Can, will we be able to fix this somehow? Here is a mistake, found it. Bam, let's go. Okay, uh, we're not doing that well, um, we also, I also forget one hand, at least, uh, these are many hands. Um, diamonds and clubs. Let's go. So we have against this. What, what does Wissen Vision say? Do we, should, should we still fold or not? Um, if I put in this very, um, semi bluff heavy range with a lot of combo draw stuff, we have thirty-eight percent equity. And I mean, it's probably even better because he would leave some of his sets, so if we remove some of the sets and some of the two pairs which he doesn't want us to check back with. Then we do a lot better. So. Oh, we also forgot more hands, right? What about kings with diamonds? What about kings with diamonds or kings with clubs? Or queens, is, are people doing this with queens? Now let's, let's not get too. Too insane, yeah. My, if he, if he likes semi bluff and is not, uh, check raising all his made hands too, we should not fold. Okay, we. Okay, so. Um, I need to follow you. What do I do with click here and click? Okay, I follow you now. Um. Yeah, not sure if I got your tweet. Uh, don't you have, um, Giatso? This tool is very helpful for screenshots, so not sure if, uh, I put it on screen already, so that is. With this huge semi bluffing, uh, range, we should not fold anymore. But not sure if people are actually semi bluffing that much. And I guess the three also is huge for our hand. Um, if we, um, let's make it ten, ten might also helpful, be helpful. Uh, ten in clubs. Okay, ten is also is even more helpful, we need something that is not helpful at all, like in seven, seven is helpful. Six is helpful, why is everything helpful? Basically, everything is before, four can't be that helpful. Okay, four needs to be diamond. Seems like the three is not helpful. Why is the three not helpful? Gives us a gut shot. This is not important at all, what if, if we have three aces, for example? When our hand should be, should have less equity, but it's not dropping much. So seems like the gut shot is not adding. A lot to our hand, what is if we have a double pair in hand? When we, sick, yeah, stupid, strange. Okay, vision is not firing. Vision is a net. Yeah, I'm also not sure, um. Do you think that people are semi bluffing very wide here or not? I mean, I already told him on the flop, but I'm most likely not strong. And on the turn, I might have picked up the backdoor flush draw, but that's about it. And yeah, also not that many two pair that got possible for me now. So I guess it's a good spot for him to check raise. At least, yeah, that's what I think, um, not sure if other people think the same and. So, but, um, yeah. At least according to my analysis, um, once we bet, we cannot fold anymore. Yeah, I guess this, although, um, what was this, the first strange, yeah? Even, um, if we had all the, um, made hands in there too for the check raise, we, um, still were doing okayish, I, if I remember correctly, so yeah. Folding is not an option anymore, although this looks very spewy. I mean, the three should help a bit, because, yeah, we now go have a gut shot too. Yeah, don't like that I folded in game, but. Oh. This is probably a check forward. This will probably. Be solvable. With the poker trainer foot forward, raise, re-raise, full call. What is the board? The board is six, uh, five, six, eight. Eight, five, six, eight, five, six. Eight, but this one. Okay, and we download and we have ace, queen, queen, five. Ace, queen, queen, five. Checking one hundred percent. Okay, checking, and what is our action if we, oh, that was stupid, um. Ace, queen, queen, five. Folding. Now we fold if we have very weak backdoors only or no backdoors at all, and otherwise we go for the check call. Although this plays very terrible and not sure if you can navigate correctly with hands like this. Um, on all sort of board runouts. Yeah, this would be, will be very tough. Um. Once you check all. To play turns and river correct. This is also, we are. Race first in is low. Yeah, I think I might have made a mistake in this end. Because I was bad calling and, yeah, my reasoning for it was. Uh, that he is wider than the normal people, but that's actually not true. Um, he is splitting his range in raises and limbs and his raises are even less than a wreck would raise, so. But, uh, on the other hand, um. If his range is more high card heavy, then he often missed this board and, yeah. Bad calling could be okay. Uh, yeah, but, yeah, no idea. Check calling seems like I get myself into a lot of trouble. Okay, let's go, let's find out, um. What we bet on this flop? So, yeah, we bet almost nothing. Um. We hit this board almost never, and that's why, um, our whole range, almost our whole range wants to check. Yeah, looks like none of the hands here, almost none, um, have fifty percent or more for bet. Yeah, six, six, deuce, deuce, so. Set wants to bet more than fifty percent and, yeah, everything else. Just very tiny, 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 tiny numbers. Yeah, I guess, um, we can make our life more easy and just check whole range here. Um, definitely very reasonable and what? Once checked, uh, let's also, um, look into the range. Uh, how our opponent should play his range. And he should do a lot more betting. When we are so sixty-three percent betting and only forty-six percent checking. Uh, this is because his range is a lot stronger than ours and hit this board a lot more. And, yeah, he bets all his value stuff for sure and. What? Yeah, and just random bluff sport or we, so he's, yeah, he's stabbing a lot with weak stuff. So, uh, what is his checking range? So if he hit the board very, very hard, blocking our continuing range when he has like a straight and a set or something, um, when he is supposed to check, and what else is checking? King, four, three, deuce, uh, so a rap. To the idiot and also straight, hands like this are checking, um. Eight, nine, jack, king, yeah, so, uh. Hands, um, with down want to get blown off equity, uh, which. Uh, like it very much to get a free card, check, uh, check two. And, yeah. King, king, four, deuce, yeah, okay, king, king, makes sense, often you have the best hand, no reason to bluff, you also got a gut shot, but to the idiot and. Makes sense to check this, yeah, so just was looking briefly into that to get a better idea, um. How to construct my range. Guess we are done with this now, and, yeah, let's see. If I now can. Is it, it's here? You, I, okay, I. Let's try to bring this up. Vision, uh, yeah. Okay, our hand is checking according to vision and let's see. Guess we got more. What is this? Okay, and we pot if we have one of the flush draws. Makes sense, although sometimes we also check as it seems, ace. Although that's not, not aces, is it? Whatever, so some slow plays. Oh, this is a three bet or not, what do you think? Raise, download. Hey, I, you, this cannot be a huge mistake, if it's not a three bet, I guess. Uh, let's see, uh, it is three bets, so God lucky and made it correct. Uh, oh. What happened here? I did something stupid, I was three betting U T G and got four bet from button and then called and then hit a flop which I. and got four bet from button and then called and then hit a flop which I don't like too much. Wow. I think we cannot simulate this with vision, right? Not really. Cut off raises. Uh, yeah, we, we could do, no, we cannot do. Let's just do some estimation, um. If I can stay into the hand or not. Although this is um making my hand a bit worse than it actually is because yeah, the three, uh the four betting range is not constructed in a linear sense, so that you all only bet the top part of your range, but you put in some speculative bullshit as well. That's is not accounting for that, so let's see how we do, um. Yeah, if we put just put in this five percent, um. We should continue, as we have bought pot left and only need thirty-three percent. If we make him a bit tighter then the story already changes. And yeah, I guess it makes sense to make him tighter, um. This is UTG versus MP and yeah. He should have a lot of aces, so yeah, folding probably is the correct play, although it looks like this is a board where we should not fold. Um. This, this one was, uh, yeah, I was very tilted as this happened. So this is a very active, crazy dude and yeah, um I forbet him. He calls and then shoves all in and I just got shot and backed off last draw and was like, fuck, what's going on? Um, what do you think? Should I call or should I fold? Also only needing like twenty-five percent, so. Guess. Folding cannot be that bad, uh calling cannot be that bad, as the gut shot probably already gives us enough equity. So uh it's twenty-five percent about accurate. Yeah, let's put it at twenty-five percent. We don't have the biggest sample size, but I played a few heads with him and in these he was quite crazy. Oh, if he's uh dunking all in everything, we are not doing that well, but yeah, I guess well enough, um. Let's, um, I think that's probably, um. He probably doesn't go all in with nothing at all, so he needs either a pocket pair. Um, or some sort of fit, so let's put in all possible hits. Um, any straight draw. And click okay and click start. Okay, we are not doing that much, uh only a bit worse, so. Against a dude like him, probably um calling with just a gut shot seems to be fine, um. I think uh this is a bit underestimating my equity because the very top part of his range, the sets and stuff, he probably is not shoving all in, he might just check and try to induce a bluff or get in on later streets, I mean, he doesn't need too much, too much protection if he hit a set, for example. So yeah, uh I like my call, but it's definitely a situation you don't want to be in. Hmm. Oh, I remember this one, I, uh, do I remember this one? Yes, I do, um. I guess, uh, I think I three bet. I, did I three bet? Yeah, let's. I don't remember, um. I think he bets small on the turn, I call, um and I, he bets smaller again on the river and I puke. So, we probably lost this end. It seems fair to assume ace, king, ten, nine is our hand. So, I three bet pre, he calls, I bet the flop small, he calls. Turn brings the flush, I check, he bets small, I call, turn, here is almost nothing left, I check, he bets all in. What to do? Twitch chat. Can he have bluffs? We get a very nice price here. But not sure if he should call or not. Okay, let's just put him at he's playing eighty percent of hands so far, so. Eighty percent, he didn't re-raise pre-flop, but he looks quite passive, so he's probably not re-raising too much. And what can he have? He can have a high flush. Uh, ace, cc. Uh, cc. Ah, lower flushes all right, also betting, let's say no, uh. Let's say he's betting any king, he's betting four, four, he's betting eight, eight. He can get half eight, eight, I mean, this calling flop is a good price, um this kind of player definitely plays it this way and yeah, if he's betting all kings still. Oh, we still do very badly. Why do we do so bad if he's betting all kings? Okay, our hand is not the hand we got, but it shouldn't change much, uh we have king, yeah, it shouldn't change too much. Ace hearts, king diamonds, nine, clubs, ten hearts. It's not changing much, uh. So he is betting nut flush, he is betting any king, he's betting queen high flush. He's betting four, four, he's betting eight, eight. And we only have fourteen percent as it seems, so. Can he have bluffs? So. Can he have bluffs? I mean, are people calling flop with a complete float when betting half pot on the turn and then assuming that you will still fold on the river for quarter pot? Are people doing this or not? We even do this when he is doing this with all flashes. I also don't understand why we are having so little equity when I add all kings in there. I mean, this range should include a lot of kings and some of them should be worse when the chips top kicker. Is the board wrong or something? I don't think so. Looks correct. So yeah, looks, I think it looks like I can still fold. Could I fold the turn? So, moving this one, I think not, right? Yeah, the turn for half pot, we got too much equity to fold. Are you clicking, um, call? Getting such a good price, just assuming that your opponent might be bluffing with random shit. We let's add ace, clubs, not necessarily with the flush and four, which is now turning into bluff. Yeah, in this case. We are making a huge mistake, um, what if we only I, if it's on. It's only doing this, okay, when we all sogar enough equity, we only add the four. That's a four, perhaps a lot. Yeah, so there could be some random bluffs, or if he had called the flop with seven, seven, or nine, nine, which is now turning into a bluff. Then we would already have enough equity. So this is tough, I guess. Oh, should we still fold? This would be very interesting to get some feedback. A very, a very helpless. This helpless? I think that's wrong. Okay, that's actually the word, but it sounds wrong. Uh, yeah, I'm lost a bit, so yeah, not sure if I should call river, I mean, I just beat complete air. And yeah, he called flop, but he got a really good price. Guys like this call flop a lot when they got a really good price. They could turn something into a bluff like four, for example, I mean, we don't need to do it much. Uh. Okay, let's make a very specific example. Let's say he is turning a four into bluff when he also has the ace of clubs with it. Yeah, I guess so, I mean, most people would, so then we can. If he's just bluffing with a four, which call on the flop, where he also has the ace of clubs, when we already got enough equity to be, to, to call. Yeah, I don't know, you see, uh we just have thirty-two hands on this player, he so far played eighty VIP. So he played eighty VIP and yeah. We bet the flops very small, one, four, pot, he calls and then he bets half pot and river all in, uh need to go to the door. But let me know your answer. There are many deliveries today. Yeah, I guess he's floating the right range. I mean. I don't know if this specific player does, but um this player type usually calls flop with all sort of crap. I mean, he's getting a very good price, one third pot only.
Hmm.
So I guess could call, lose and find something to bluff with. Although half pot turn and then small river looks kind of nudge. Yeah, I'm not sure if I can. If I should call or fold here. Next hand, but think about it and let me know what you think, would you call or not? Uh, this was an insane hand. Another insane hand. We are also very deep, um. Did I three bet or four bet? Something like that. Um. Let's look into this, um. So king, king, and I lost a lot. So we are searching a king, king hand on a fast table. How much do we put in, like seventy BBs? Um, king, king. Here it is. So I raise. He raises, did I re-raise again? It's hard to see, I think I just called. I just called, he folds, you see this flop? Uh, he bets more, I raise, I mean, this player is very aggressive and three betting like two or three times the amount he should according to the GTO, so. If there's an ace high board, you don't need to be that scared and yeah, I thought this is a nice little summer bluff. Uh, yeah, raising the flop, he calls and yeah, for some reason he chips in on the turn and yeah, I'm lost. So. He three bets pre-flop or squeezes. I call, the caller pulls. Uh, yeah, we see this flop, I raise a small flop bet, he calls on the turn, he is all in. Let's see. How we are doing if we give him range, but seems to be reasonable. He is squeezing, I think, like twenty percent. And he bets small and continues. So can have three, five. He needs an ace with it, he needs three, five, although three, five, three, five with an ace is not enough. Cannot call a flop raise. Three, five, ace, and king, are there other good cards? Um. A deuce. A ten maybe, although he probably just chips it in before. Um. Three, five. Three, five with diamonds. Um. Ace ten. Without diamonds. Ace, ten without diamonds. Hmm, what else can you have? Ace, queen, jack with four. Ace with clubs. Jack, queen, king with clubs. Ten deuce with clubs. Ten four with diamonds. A pair. Ace, ten, deuce. And the hand has to have diamonds and clubs. Ja, this makes sense. Deuce four with diamond. I guess, let's look. What? What? How can I have this little equity? Is something wrong? Club, this suit is not correct. So twenty-seven percent against the range I gave him. He could have like diamonds and clubs. Some random stuff. Still only thirty percent. Can he have sets? I think not. Probably just ships sets on the flops, so... Ja, ja, but seems like according to my range, we could still fold facing a pot size bet, although our hand looks kind of nudgeish. And ja, this is a kind of player that could have a straight, although most people should not be able to have one. Ja, so folding is might still be the play. Ja, okay, next one. Oh, wet. Wet was a very annoying one, too. I raised, Kronos re-raised. The guy, the green one. AGL, cold court. And ja, we see a three-way flop. I mean, my hand looks quite good. And my plan was to check raise against Kronos and against a reasonable size, like a half pot or one-third. But after the fun player bets the full pot, I was completely lost and didn't knew what to do anymore. I mean, sometimes we randomly do it with a bluff still, but if he is doing this to commit himself, then I'm not sure if my hand is good enough to get it in. Even calling out of position might not be an option. Nine hearts, nine clubs. What can he have? Are people betting full pot when we have the nuts? Or is this just with nine or worse? No clue. What is this guy cold calling? Most likely quite a bit of fans, because he is loose and he likes to see flops and likes to play hands. And let's see how we do against the range of... Straight draws, we should add some straight draws, too. Let's give him a nice white little range. Let's also add in some overpairs, like for example kings, queens. Tens, if we got a gudgeon, too. So ten, ten, jack or ten, ten, eight. This is even an open ender. Ten, ten, six is also a possibility. So this is six, six, eight, five with spades and hearts. So against the perceived range he gave him, we got thirty-seven percent. But these thirty-seven percent are... If we see two cards, so if we just see one more card, this is a lot more expensive to see more cards. This is what we need to take into account as well. And we are also not drawing to any nudgeish hand. And if we are facing a full house, we are not in a good shape at all. Let's remove the full houses. Let's say he is doing this with... What he's doing is still with nine, but nine is not allowed to have a seven, too, because this was beautiful house. And in this case, our equity jumps. Makes a big jump. Okay, forty, I think you can see it. So ja, I pulled it up a bit. Nine, seven. Let's add this again. Nine, seven, seven, seven. And nine, nine. This was the ones I read it before. And yeah, against this, we are not doing well at all. Ja, it's also questionable if he's going crazy with all these straight draws. So let's remove some of them. And let's also remove these ten, ten, ten hands. Although, let's only remove this one. Ja, we're still doing quite well. If he's not doing this with overpairs, he's just checking them back. And with all his strong hands, ja, when we are in quite a lot of pain. If he is slow playing his full houses, then ja, we... I guess... What's the summary of all this? We just played around a bit, gave him some ranges he might have. And ja, I think given that he's betting the full pot and that our hand is not nudgeish at all and that we also got one more player behind left to act. Although this looks nearly, I think, folding is the way to go. Also down, without further reads, I also don't expect to have that much full equity, so... I guess folding. Although this is a perfect hand to play back. If you don't want to play back with a nine only, but ja, given the circumstances, I was in great fear and couldn't do it. Oh, that was an annoying one, too. Ja, flocking was check, check. I elected to bet the turn with the assumption that I will not get raised ever. And he snapped, re-raised me for pot. Snap without any further do with any, without any thinking, just snap pot raise. And he already did this snap pot raising once before and then he had the nuts. So should we fold, although our hand looks quite well? So we got ten, ace, hearts, ace, spades, nine hearts. He is... Probably limped and I raised or something like that. Or he raised and I called. But give me his stats, probably he limped, I raised, he called. Ja, probably. So let's give him ten percent to seventy percent or something. He's, he likes to splash around. And ja, let's start off with the nuts, king, ten. Against king, ten. We don't have the odds to continue. I mean, we might have some plays, but if we had the flush, it's all obvious for everyone. And ja, we could decide to bluff if the board pairs, but ja, not sure if it's going to work out. So without further reads, it's very hard. Flop was check, check. It's very hard to say if we got in plays or not. And if we got in plays, probably it's not folding. If the board pairs or if the flush comes in. So if we got in plays, we can probably call and bet river once we hit, but we should not bluff. And if we don't got in plays, then we should not call in the first place, because we don't get the right price. And if we get called, if we call and hit, we don't get any more money. But in this case, we might still have enough equity to call, because we could bluff, but changing stuff that doesn't help us. So let's say, ja, so in both cases, we would have enough equity probably to call if we knew what sort of player here is. But as we don't know that, it's best before, I guess. But if we knew he's never folding the river, we could call and dunk if we hit. And if we now he folds on any scare card, when we could call and bluff, the cards we don't hit, ja, probably check the ones we hit, because ja, let's exploitative play and hope that the bluffs or whatever. Bet again, thin for value again. What is if he had, if we add some bluffs here, too? Ja, if he is doing some bluffs with ten, ten or king, king. We have a lot of equity and it might be reasonable to call. So blocker bluffs. But ja, I don't know. Given the timing, we can assume that he is having a blocker bluff. I mean, for me at the time, I was like, okay, I probably ran into king, ten and I don't want to do anything about it and I just folded. Because I also have no reads if I have implied or if I can bluff rivers, which don't improve me. I also choose a timing, a sizing, but it's very hard for me to continue. Ja. What happened here? I four bet, I think, and he dunked all in. And I was not happy at all. This is one, two. And I have queens. So... Ja. And he's dunking all in and I am crying. In the first place, let's find out how spurious was my four bet. Queen, queen, ace, three. Two. Looks like this is not... I have three of the suit. So ja, he's preferring to just call, but he wants to four bet some of the rainbow ones. So minus one point seven three. If we go crazy and how much do we... Ja, okay, we lose less when we don't go crazy. So ja, probably it's a bit better to not four bet. But not a huge mistake. I also wonder why I did that. We need to see a hat. Maybe there was a reason behind that. Or maybe I was just like, my hand is so pretty, I need to go crazy. Ja, his stats are more leading in the direction of not doing this play. I mean, against him, he is not three betting wide at all. So I think against him, the best line of play would have been fold against this three bet, because he's just three betting five percent against the button open in six point four K hands. So ja, this was very spurious. I don't like it at all. See, at least... At least he's folding a lot against forwards. He's so far folded thirty-three percent against forwards out of position. So that's a little thing that makes this a bit better. But ja, I think a folding against three bet is the way to go. Let's see. Ace, queen, queen. Ace, queen, queen. What is it? Three or something with a lot of the same suit against five percent. Ja, we seem like we are not doing too well putting a lot more money in. So that's quite a big mistake. And ja, I guess this was also because I don't see his stats in the screenshot. And ja, hold the manager was not working at this moment, or he was new at the table. So I don't have stats for him yet and I assumed this is a normal guy who is three betting more than just five percent. And that's why I probably choose the line of play. And ja, ja, king, seven, three. Let's see what the sol was suggest to do on king, seven, three once we three bet our hand. Wenn wir ähm drei bei unserer Hand. Äh, fünf, vorbei. Ich meine, äh, fuck, wir haben keine vorbeipacken. Das ist unglücklich. Ähm ja. Kannst du dir das anschauen, auch in Vision? Äh, wir wollen wissen, ob es Sinn macht, ob es Sinn macht, einen Kollten zu tun. Ich glaube nicht, aber ähm. Was weiß ich? Ich meine, ich forderte dies in der ersten Stunde und dies war schrecklich. So ähm. Sieben, sechs, drei, King, Harts. Also machen wir dieses Bereich ein bisschen größer, als dies ist. Ja, ähm, weil wir nicht wollen, dass wir dreibeit, nur die Toppart. Aber wir addieren einige Hände hier. Also jede Paare, er kollte in eine Flasche, er kollte in ähm vier, fünf, sechs ist die einzige Straight Draw, die auf diesem Board. Ähm, ich denke, er kollte nicht alle. Äh, wenn er ein Set hat, richtig? Aber ja, das ähm. Okay, er ist nicht gegen eine Hand. Er hat 100%. Das macht Sinn. Also löschen wir unsere Hand zu. Queen, Harts, Queen, Spades. Und wir sind sehr schlimm gegen den Bereich, den wir ihm gaben. Löschen wir alle Sets, weil er viel Platz hat, um Geld in der Street zu bekommen. Und er möchte nicht, dass ich etwas schrecklich mach. In diesem Fall haben wir noch sehr schreckliche Equity. Wir können, weil der King bereits ist und der King wahrscheinlich eine große Teil des Ranges uns sehr, sehr hart kracht. Also ja, das scheint zu sein, ein einfaches Füllen. So. Yes, jetzt Button versus Big Blind und es ist ein vorbeipacken. Ähm, ich war sehr stupide, zu fordern. Äh, dieses. Ah, was war dies? Dies ist wieder gegen ein donkisch Spieler. Also ist die early Position wahrscheinlich. Also early Position Rais. Ich habe Ace, so ich rausbrach für Sicherheit. Ich kollte. Flop ist Queen, zehn, sieben. Ich habe wahrscheinlich einen Fehler beim Betten. Hmm, so checken, downloaden Sie. Ace, Ace, drehten. Ace, Ace, drehten. Hatte ich einen Fehler gemacht, bei dem Betten? Äh, nein, nicht nötig. Schaut so aus, als seien die Ace, Ace, zehn, drei, für beten. Und es möchte für eine halbe Port beten. Und wahrscheinlich Fools, wenn es rausbricht. Ist das korrekt? Ace, Ace, zehn, drei. Ich bin sicher, dass es vorbei ist. Ja, es ist. Ähm. Was habe ich getan? Ähm, ich habe auch, wow, ich ja, es schaut so aus, als habe ich genau das getan, was ich getan hatte. Und ja, auf den Turn, ähm, ich habe die Karte nicht gefreut. Und ich probiere, ich checke zurück. Oh ja, was, das ist, was passiert. Können wir checken, eine Port. Oh, leider gibt es keine Sims mehr im Pilot Trainer. Ja, Button für das kleine Blatt ist fast gleich. Ähm, erst die Räume ändern nicht viel. Ich denke, der dreibettige Bereich ist ja sehr similar. Also sollte das nicht so viel unterschieden. Ja, was soll hier? Ich denke, die Rücken zu checken ist das einzige Spiel. Die Acht bringt in neun, sechs, nein, Jack. Und auch könnte es ihm geben, zwei Paare sehr einfach. Wir haben auch nicht die Backdoor Flasche. Äh, ja, wir lieben zu ja, wir sind in einem Schipshod on Mode und versuchen, unsere Hände zu zeigen. Ähm, wir erwarten nicht, dass wir oft das bekommen. Aber ähm gegen einen Spieler, der wahrscheinlich nicht genau weiß, was er tut. Wir können immer noch den Hand diesen Zeitpunkt gewinnen. Weil ja, Leute wie er von meiner Erfahrung sehr weit auf dem Flop peilen. Und ja, die Acht hat nicht ihm geholfen. Also ja, checken zurück und hoffen, dass ein freies Schott auf uns scheint zu sein. Ja, und äh, ich denke, ich habe auch die Hand gewonnen. Äh, Ace, Queen, Queen, drei. Mit drei äh, aus dem gleichen Suit. Das ist nicht dreibett, also nehmen Sie die Rainbow-Version oder etwas. Die Rainbow-Version, according to the Jane Nandis Tool, ist dreibett. Ja, drei. Und ja, dies, tatsächlich habe ich dieses Hand gewonnen. Er hatte, ich weiß nicht, was er hatte, aber ähm. Der River war ein zehn. Und ich war so, wow, shit. Äh, kann ich ein Wert beten oder was soll ich tun, wenn er jetzt beten will? Ähm, aber er hat nicht beten. Und ja, ich habe auch nicht beten. Und ja, wir gewinnen. Ich denke, ähm, es war genau so, wie ich dir gesagt habe, dieser Typ peilt mit einer sehr marginalen Hand auf dem Flop. Und ja, es kam nicht dazu. Und ja, ich hatte auch keine Ballen, um Bluff zu machen. Also ich habe den Port gewonnen. Und ja, ich bin auch nicht sicher, ob das Bluff funktioniert hätte, aber ja. Das ist die Geschichte dieses Hand. Ja. Ich glaube, mindestens diese sind auf den Händen, die ich heute habe. Aber wir könnten etwas anschauen, was interessant ist. Obwohl ich auch sehr müde bin. Aber ich bleibe noch warten auf ähm die Antwort auf das Ace, Queen, Queen Hand. Aber ich bin sicher, ähm, dass meine Analysen in Propagated was auch sehr gut. Also ja, ich würde sehr überrascht sein, wenn dies etwas anderes wäre, wenn ich es füllte. Ja, wenn äh, nicht viel mehr für mich zu sagen heute. Außer wenn ähm, wenn du für free Coaching für ein free Coaching applyen, checke auf mein YouTube, ähm, wo ich dir sag, wie du es machst. Ähm, ich werde das Live-Drauf sehr bald tun. Also, aber du kannst sehen, dass ich nicht ähm schämen und nur meine Leute nehmen. Und ja, nicht viele Menschen sind in dem Drauf noch. Also du hast eine gute Chance, free Coaching zu bekommen. Und alles, was du tun musst, ist, alle meinen Kanäle zu folgen. Und abonnieren. Und ja, kommentiere ein Video, wo ich die Nachricht machen. Also ja, nicht vergessen, diese Gelegenheit. Wenn du ein Pokémon-Poker-Spieler bist, der besser will. Und die denken, dass ich kompetent bin. Obwohl eine der Hände, Queen, Queen, vorbei, war nicht äh, mich in einem guten Licht zu setzen. Äh, ich glaube, in generell habe ich etwas gute Entscheidungen getroffen. Also ja. Freuen Sie sich, für das zu applyen. Und ja. O M F G. Ihr habt immer noch nicht geschrieben, eure Skype. Ähm, ich denke, ihr könnt es tun, so jetzt, weil ich euch gefolgt habe. Äh, ja, bitte tun so. Und ja, wir können später mehr darüber sprechen. Ja, also danke fürs Zuschauen und bis zum nächsten Mal. Bye bye. Und auch nicht vergessen, mir die Resultate für Ace, für die Queen, Queen Hand zu sagen. Aber ja, ich bin sicher, es wird gefüllt. Also ja, tschüss, bis zum nächsten Mal.